Okay, it's five o'clock. We'll call the, I'll call the Village of Board of Oregon to order for Mondays, September ninth, 2024. I ask the clerk to call a roll, please.
Bashan?
Here.
Higgins?
Here.
Manke?
Here.
Kurt Starfer?
Here.
McDaniel?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Van Campen?
Here. Thank you. Item three, approval of July thirty first, twenty twenty four, and August nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Village Board meeting minutes if correct, and corrections of mistakes, any promotion to approve. Tom and Jason, corrections, comments?
Comment?
Please.
With all those ordinances last time, I thought you guys were gonna be here like hours approving them. And then I saw the adjournment time, and I thought, holy cow, that was swift.
We're efficient.
Efficient, yes.
There was a lot of work done in advance.
Of course, of course, yeah.
Everybody read the ordinances.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, further comments? Hearing on all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four, public appearances, comments, communications, on for discussion, and/or possible action. A swearing in, swearing in and oath of office for Cindy Newhouse for a promotion to lieutenant in the Oregon Police Department. Chief, please.
Yes, so a while back ago, I came to this board and talked to you about the strong need for a second lieutenant. And first of all, I want to again thank you for allowing us to add that lieutenant. I think it will make a substantial addition to our department and our operations. From there, what we did is we, I met with the police commission to ask them, how do you want to proceed? Do we want to do this internally, externally, or both? The feedback, in which I completely agree, from the police commission was, we have some amazing people in our department. Let's run the process internally. Couldn't agree more. We opened up the process, and we had three people apply, which I was very happy to see the interest in people wanting to step up into a very stressful and very complicated position. So from there, we, we, we do this, what we call PPQ. It's a very lengthy set of questions to identify the level of leadership in each candidate. And everything is scored using a scoring matrix. With the lieutenant position, it's unique in that it is command level. So what the process is for that is we do an external command level law enforcement panel. So on that panel was a captain with Walworth County Sheriff's Office, a captain with Winnebago County, and a captain with Middleton Police Department. Captains are actually above lieutenants, if that position exists in that organization. What's unique about all three of those departments is they're also accredited. So they, they share in some of the same values we share. The second panel was a community panel. Two of the community panelists are actually here because they're excited for Cindy, and that is Tim and Fran back there. So thank you for coming. Immediately, the feedback I got back from both panels was, you have a hard decision to make. You have three incredible people here. The other feedback we got was, you guys have really come a long way. And it's great to see where the department is at now. So it's really great stuff to hear. It was a very difficult decision to make. Ultimately, Cindy was promoted. She'll take that spot effective October first. What I can share about Cindy is I've worked most of my career with her in Oregon. She, as of November, it'll be nineteen years, right?
Eighteen.
Eighteen years. She's been patrol officer, a very active patrol officer. I would say hands down, she leads the department in OWI arrests. She's very vigilant, also with theft from autos, identifying and capturing burglars, you name it. She's out there, when all of us are resting, she's the one out there moving around, making sure our community can sleep good at night. She was a school resource officer for three years?
Four.
Four years. Yes, started many programs. It just takes too long to list all of them, but she was a very effective SRO. Created a lot of great working relationships, to which we still lean on those working relationships. She's a field training officer. And whenever we have an officer that's really struggling, but we see that potential still there, she is one of the few, we rely on heavily to help pick that officer up and get them pointed in a more productive path. She is an instructor in several things. She will also be an instructor for the Women's Self-Defense Course, along with Detective Navarro. She became a sergeant, patrol sergeant mostly on night shift. She handles a lot of our grant paperwork. She handles just about all of our open records requests. And she does so with a lot of pride and a lot of diligence. So I certainly appreciate that. And she pushes police, the policing in our community to continue to be better. So that is certainly a lot of the reason why I selected her. And I think she will do a great job as a lieutenant and as part of my command staff with Lieutenant Shaw and Rudy. So I did ask her to say a few things, because this is a command level position. This is a very impactful position as far as policing our community. So I wanted to give her an opportunity to, to say a few things.
Thank you, Chief. That's very kind of you. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me tonight. Like Chief Pagan cough said, I've been with the department just under eighteen years. It's been a privilege to serve here. I've enjoyed lots of different roles, grown to love this community. And I look forward, and I'm very, very excited to continue on with this promotion and moving to the command staff. We have an amazing department, and I look forward to growing with them. So thank you for tonight.
We'll move forward with the swearing in. I'll hold my phone for you. Want to raise your right hand? Repeat after me. I, Cindy M. Nehaus, do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
I, Cindy M. Nehaus, do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Wisconsin, the Charter, laws and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Wisconsin, the Charter, laws and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department and the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics.
The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department and the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as lieutenant of the Oregon Police Department. I will assume my duties as of October first, twenty twenty four.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as lieutenant of the Oregon Police Department. I will assume my duties as of October first, two thousand twenty four.
Congratulations. Thank you to you. So now what we're gonna do is have Lieutenant Nehaus's mom come up and pin her badge for her.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Can't change your mind after you sign.
That was a bluff.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Item four, be public comment. This is part of the agenda. It allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Under the open means law, this agenda item allows the board to receive information and ask questions of the presenter to facilitate a better understanding of the information. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Otherwise, the agenda will proceed as posted. Anyone here for public comments? It appears not. Okay, thank you. Item four, C, presentation from the village's financial advisor, Ellers, regarding the annual update to the village's financial management plan. Welcome, Dave.
I was asked if I could make this more interesting. My answer was no.
I tried.
Fair enough.
Numbers are numbers, right? So you either like them or you don't. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present your twenty twenty four financial management plan. As you know, we kind of get rolling with this in June, and Martin throws a lot of numbers at me, and he comes back to you a couple times. And then, and then we're here to kind of present what, what came about. So who's running the, so I need to tell you what to do, right?
Yes.
Okay. So on the next slide, we'll just kind of go over your financial policies real quick, kind of go through the operating projection, the capital plan, which you've seen a couple times already, and then just kind of go through the TID cash flows, just so you know where your TIDs are at going forward. Next slide. The rating, the rating is obviously a part of what we do when we borrow money for you, for your projects. One of the things that, that is important for you to know is that the rating actually is the same as it was the year before. But you did improve in a couple of the categories. One was in the long-term obligations area, where you went from an A to a double A. And also one area that's basically related to the laws that affect how you can operate in the State of Wisconsin. You went from an A to a double A, which is kind of weird, because typically, rating agencies give everybody an A, and there isn't a double A. So you must be something special to get that extra little bump for that. Just kind of, you know, I did include at the back of the presentation, the, the actual rating report from Moody's. So if you want to read through that, you have that opportunity to do that. Again, I think it was included in your borrowing documents as well when we, when we sold for you. So I'm not gonna go through that unless you have specific questions on that. The only thing I think I'll add on that is that one thing that they did give us this year, it's kind of new, is, is what does it take to get an upgrade? And one of the things that they said is that you need to moderate your, your long-term liabilities. I, I think once you see the capital plan and what, what you have in store, it's gonna be kind of hard for us to really moderate the long-term liabilities unless you were to, you know, cut back on what you're planning to do. So I think, you know, I don't think Moody's has any issue with what you have proposed to do as far as the capital plan. They know you're growing. They know you're gonna, gonna be able to pay for your, your projects because of that growth, so they don't have a concern about that. So I would see you probably sticking around a double A, too. And if they did upgrade you, it's because the growth that you had is outpacing what you're doing as far as getting up to speed with your, you know, your facilities that, you know, got put off for a number of years prior to what you're doing now. So going on to the next slide, we'll just talk a little bit about financial policies. The general fund, fund balance policy, and the debt service capacity fund balance, or debts capacity policy. Next slide. Your policy is to be between twenty-five and thirty-five percent. There's a graph on the next slide that'll show you that of the operating expenditures. So your unassigned fund balance is really the, they call it the rainy day fund in some places. That number needs to be between twenty-five and thirty-five percent. If you're in excess of the thirty-five percent, then the village transfers money out to the capital fund. This year, you actually transferred money out to the equipment funds, because you had more than that thirty-five percent line. Fund balance also needs to be stored if it drops below that specific range. You know, the only thing that's gonna drop you below that range is levy limits, and I think you're trying to address those as, as we're speaking already. So I won't go too far into that, because I think you've been going down that path a little bit. Next slide just kind of gives you the, the categories of fund balance. Really, the, the most important one for your health is the unassigned line. Moody's does include assigned, if it's something that they think that isn't really committed to something. Assigned fund balance is really where you can set money aside, but you could also move it. So they usually include that in your liquidity. And so that's, you know, that's a part of what we were talking about with the fund balance policy. As far as the next slide goes, you know, only thing I'll comment on this is, fund balance is one-time money. The gist of this slide is, is don't use it for operating. Don't get caught up using it to, to do, pay for things that are ongoing. It's used for things like, you can transfer it to capital, you can use it for emergencies if you have shortfalls. Those are the kind of things you should use fund balance for, but you should never use it to basically pay for ongoing salaries and things like that, because it'll create a hole, and you won't be able to recover from it. The next slide just shows you how the historical unassigned fund balances has gone over the last few years. You know, we've had a fund balance percentage of about thirty-seven percent. This shows thirty-six percent. You know, it's kind of riding along the thirty-one, thirty-two percent line. You know, as far as how that looked the last year, we were at thirty-seven percent for twenty twenty, or for twenty twenty, and it kind of rode around the thirty-four percent, but dropped to thirty percent for twenty-three. So, you know, it's still right in that area as far as that policy goes. And that transfer out that you did this last year was about three hundred and forty thousand dollars that went to the equipment fund. Next slide is on levy limits. I don't think that I need to go into this super deep, because you are looking at maybe doing a referendum. You have some things in, in place as far as trying to get some feedback from the community on, on a path forward, that, you know, one step in your, your path forward on whether or not you should go out for a levy limit referendum. So I'll just go on to the next slide, just to kind of talk a little bit about the lines that are important. This is one of those exciting number schedules. But there's a line that is, let's see. It's the one, yep, the one that says, "Applied to prior year adjusted actual levy." So that line where it says a hundred and sixty-five thousand for twenty twenty-four, that is actually how much your net new construction, which is basically defined as anything you put in the ground new, less demolition. So you've had pretty good growth years. You know, these are some of the better numbers that I see, around three percent, a little bit above. So you're, you're able to go, raise your levy about a hundred and sixty-five thousand, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. For the projection, we did two percent, which is a little low, a little conservative, but that's about a hundred and twenty thousand a year. You know, the other part of the levy limit calculation has to do with debt, and debt is outside of the calculation, which means, you know, when you put together your capital plan, if you approve what that plan is, then that debt service can be added on top of that, that section above. So the line that says levy limit before adjustments is the line that I always call the operating line. And, and the way that we use this in the projection is, we basically said, here's our total levy. The general fund is gonna get, for this purpose, I put the general fund getting all of the net new construction. That's not necessarily how it's gonna happen. And then, you know, basically, that's how I determine the levy in the general fund. So it's, it's a total on that line that you see for twenty twenty-four was about five point eight million. Then I subtracted out the library and the other funds that have taxes, and that was what basically the general fund went up by. Next slide basically shows you what that net new construction percentage has done the last five years and what that amounts to. And I kind of showed you that on the last slide. And then going on to the next slide, you know, as far as the components of the levy limit, the general fund, the library are subject to levy limits. They're operating in nature. And so that line that I showed you that had the five point seven million is what the general fund and library are funded through. The general obligation debt service, like I said, when you do, when you approve your capital plan and you go out for borrowing, that amount can always be added on to your tax levy to pay for that debt service. Next page kind of goes into the growth. What we, you know, we gave you a little bit of historical as far as your TID, and which means that's all of the value in the, in the village, including the TIFs. And we said that that was gonna go up by two percent, which is conservative. We also said the TID out was gonna go up by two percent. And I don't, the historical part for TID out did not make it onto this slide, but that's like around eight to ten percent as well. So that's also pretty conservative. And then we use, like I said on that slide, two percent for that net new construction to, to project out your levy. As far as the operating levy or operating revenues go, you know, last year, the depart, or the state gave us a nice hefty increase in our shared revenue. As we, you know, went around and did these kind of presentations, it's very obvious that, you know, it's a really nice, it was really nice for them to help us catch up a little bit, but it's a short-term thing. Until they fix the formula of the, of the levy limit calculation, we're gonna go back to that, that deficit that, that you'll see in a couple slides from now. You know, unless they fix that and give us something for inflation, we're always gonna be basically running into the issue of maybe having to do a levy limit referendum. And, and you know, you're not the only one that's considering it. Fitchburg's out there, there's numerous other places that are doing it. And I think the more that people do them, the more likelihood that that formula will get addressed. On any other revenues that are in your, in your operating funds, we just held those flat, because really, growing revenues in a government is next to impossible. Maybe you could have a good building permit year, but you never can depend on that. So, you know, there's just, it's just hard to really raise that. So we kept those flat. The next page basically shows you how we added an inflationary amount on your other operating lines, three percent for most things. And then health and dental, we had ten percent, although I heard the state came in at eleven percent, so maybe that's a little bit light on that one. But the next page basically is the general fund. I'm on slide sixteen, okay. Is the general fund projection for the next ten years. And so really, what you see when you look at this, is starting right in twenty twenty-five, if we can only go up by that hundred, I think it's a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and we have increases of three to ten percent, increasing those expenditure lines, we're gonna start heading towards the fact that, you know, we're not growing fast enough to keep up with our expenditures. And you can see in twenty twenty-five, it projects that we'll have a deficit. And then that just compounds over the ten years. You could see we start using fund balance up. Our fund balance percentage just goes from thirty down to basically negative once you get to twenty thirty-four. So, you know, what you're doing right now, contemplating a levy limit referendum, really is the only way you can keep up with those. And like I said, hopefully, that'll catch the eye of the legislature, and they'll start to fix that.
I like how you worked humor into this.
Well, I was told to be a little bit exciting, so. The next page, we start the capital plan. I did have the entire capital listing at the back of this in the appendix, so if you want to take a look at the details, I think you've seen them. In fact, I think you've, you've had a chance to comment on things. So what we just did is, is how are these projects funded? Mainly in the, what we're presenting tonight, we're looking at the GEO notes line, because the water sewer, clean water fund, all those will be addressed by Brian next week when he presents the, the utility portion. So when we take a look at that, down below, you can see where we have, the, the levy and TID four and five are really what make up that seventy-eight million of general obligation notes that you see on the top of that first section there. So those are the ones we'll be kind of focusing in tonight. You know, the one thing that I'll point out about this plan is that really, your capital expenditures for the ten years this, this year versus last year are up from sixty-three million up to seventy-eight million. And the TID portion of that only went up from one and a half million at one point seven million. So really, you had an increase in the levy funded projects from sixty-one million to seventy-six million, or, or fifteen million dollars increase. So when you see how much I had to use to, to basically try to stabilize the levy, you'll see we had a fairly significant jump in our annual tax levy increase to be able to do that. You know, some of the bigger pieces of the, of the capital plan were, you know, you added six million dollars for a business park, we had about two million for parks, half a million for police, one point three million for streets, and senior center was about one point two million, and that's, that makes up a part of that fifteen million dollar increase that I'm talking about. The next page is what we call the base case, and really is a picture of where you were at twelve thirty-one twenty-three. We had a levy of about three point three million with a equalized value TID out of a million seven, gave you about a tax rate of about a buck ninety. You know, that's, you know, without doing anything new, we're actually gonna hang around that, that number. And some of that has to do with, with the potential tax levy support. I know the numbers, usually I come up with are a little different than what Lisa ends up with. We can't figure out how to get on the same page of that, we're close enough, I think. So that, that number may change when you actually see the debt service budget. But that's, that's kind of where you're at going into doing any new borrowing. As far as who pays for the debt, and that's kind of how you see those red lines in there. You know, the different pieces are paid for by, by not only levy, but the TIDs have a portion of it, and the water and sewer, or, yeah, the water and sewer have a piece. You know, TIF right now owns about six point six million dollars of the, of the repayments. Water and sewer each have about two and a half million of the repayments, so the rest is levy then. Going on to the next page, really, I think is something you've probably seen as, as Martin has presented the capital plan. And really, what I'll point to directly on this page is, is there's a column under the orange, proposed debt. In fact, it's those two columns right under the words proposed debt. That really is where I'm trying to solve for, what's the levy that we need to basically try to stabilize your levy? And really, with the kind of projects you have in here, it averaged out to about five hundred thousand dollars a year. And, and what I did then is smoothed it to that number, so I'm structuring the debt payments so that we're at about five hundred thousand. I got to about twenty thirty-five, and, you know, that's, that's like the last year. The projects from thirty-four affect thirty-five. And so what you really want is that next year after the projects to be able to accommodate a year of, of CIP. So the, you know, in addition to smoothing out that five hundred thousand, I was looking to try to put in place an amount on that line that could support a brand- an amount on that line that could support a brand new borrowing without us raising taxes. And if you have a lever, a borrowing that's about the same as you did in two thousand and thirty-four, that that would be able to accommodate that. As your projects change, you know, maybe that number needs to be higher, maybe it needs to be lower. But at this time, if you're staying on the status quo because we've hit all these big projects, hopefully, you'll be able to do a project out in thirty-five and not have to raise your taxes at that point. You know, the two thousand and twenty-three amount was about three hundred and seventy-five thousand. So you can tell what that fifteen million dollars of extra projects did. You know, I had to, I had to raise the levy each year by one hundred and twenty-five thousand more than we had showed you last year in the plan. The next page is your geo borrowing capacity schedule. And and the only thing that I think is on here that we may need to address before you finalize is is there was a year two thousand and thirty where we're actually a little bit above our policy. You know, it is just a year out there as a placeholder with with some projects. And we were under prior to the business park being added to some of the run. So that that did kick us up a little bit towards that seventy-five percent. So otherwise, you're riding right along that that line. And and other than that one year, which, you know, we could probably, you know, push a little bit more principal payment earlier to get that under, or you could shift some projects. Maybe that could get you under that percentage so you can finalize your plan. Next page just shows you the levy amounts that, this is getting pretty small for me even. The levy amounts that are projected that that cover not only the general funds levy limit increases, but that debt service that we just talked about. You can see that we basically have about a levy dollar amount increase in the five, five, four and a half to five percent range. Last year, we were actually showing you a very similar, a little, actually a little higher. Tax rate, that looks like that's a tax rate. Yeah, so I, there's a part of the tax rate from last year that we're really close to. And then in the end, obviously, because of what we've done with the capital plan, you know, we're a little higher. We're at six dollars and sixty-six cents and thirty-three, whereas last year's report has a six dollars and twenty-one cents. So you can see that that impact of that. Then there's just some graphs that kind of show you the breakout of the levy twenty-four. You know, general fund was about fifty-two percent of the levy. In the future, it's about forty percent because, you know, the the debt service ends up increasing enough that 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 becomes a bigger piece of your pie in two thousand and thirty-four. Next schedule just kind of shows you that average increase in the tax dollars over time. Let's see, ten year average last year was four and a half percent based on this. And the ten year average for the twenty-four plan is five point two six. And then the next page just kind of shows you how the levy is going up. The general fund is fairly smooth, you know, with with the amount of growth you have with the two percent. You know, that goes up a little bit. You can see the dark blue line going up a little bit. Like I said, I gave all the net new construction to the general fund. That obviously isn't what what you'll do. So it shows the library staying steady. And then the debt service, really, you can see that the the existing debt service starts going down, whereas that new borrowing starts to kick in and and really grows your levy in those in those categories. Then just going through the TIFs real quick. We're going to talk to the joint review board in a couple of weeks here and ask them to extend TIF three a couple of years. The reason being is that, you know, over the years, we have levied to basically prop up the the TID and not do what's called advancing or loaning money to the TIF. What's been important about that is is loans from the general fund to the TIF districts are looked upon by the rating agencies really badly. It's it's a, basically, it's a chink in your liquidity rating. And so the fact that you've used the technique of using tax levy to support the TIF over time has helped you in that regard. But we want to give that money back to the general taxpayer. And so what we're asking the joint review board to do is extend this TIF for six more years. It doesn't quite get us to zero. That final column in in there shows that we're still short about six hundred and twenty-nine thousand. You know, that's something that if tax levy rates go up because you have a school referendum or something, that we might be able to recover it. If things stay as they are or the rate goes down, it could be that that we don't get the taxpayer completely paid off. But it's still a pretty nice chunk that we're going to get back and and having that extra six years will help. TID four was extended a couple of years ago. And as you can tell, you know, we don't need all six years based on today's environment as far as the growth. If there's more growth out there, maybe maybe we'll be able to pop that, you know, outside of that that extension period. But at the time that we did the extension, it looked like we weren't going to be able to to get everything paid back. In this scenario, we get all the tax levy support paid back and we close out the TIF successfully in two thousand and thirty-nine. TIF number five is actually doing pretty well. We actually have a little bit of a deficit going into twenty-four that, you know, if if the development continues as is, we should be outside of that advance that we have in that one and appears to be going forward. I know that some of the projects that are in the project plan may not necessarily be in here. But we kind of tried to make sure that we were only putting in known development assumptions that can pay for the projects that we have in here. So you do have quite a bit of potential in this district to do those projects. And as long as the development keeps occurring or or as much as it that takes to fill that park, that you'll be in good shape on TIF five and close that and potentially thirty-five, depending on what your future plans are. And then TID six is the one-off parcel that we did just a year or two ago. You know, we will collect money from the developer and then we will give it back to them in an incentive that was agreed upon. It'll take a couple of years to get the deficit paid off that basically occurred when we created the district. But there's, you know, there's every, everything looks to be that you will be able to pay this off. And at this point, it shows the last year would be two thousand and forty-four. So, you know, any further, you know, development numbers that maybe maybe inflationary or whatever can help that maybe improve as well. So that's kind of a quick, in my opinion, quick summary of all the things that are going on in your five year or your ten year plan at this point.
Questions for Dave? Anyone? I guess not. Thank you, Dave. Item five, approval of vouchers and the amount of seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. We have a recommendation to approve as presented. Jason and Tim. Questions, comments? Lynn?
On page sixty-one of the packet, it's item nine, five, three, zero. Can someone educate me on what this water, Wisconsin Rural Water Government Safety something is?
That is a safety training that our staff goes through each year. We go through the Wisconsin Rural Water Association. We're part of the consolidated safety group that is run out of that organization. And that's what gets us a pretty good deal on that. So that's payment for the training that all staff went through back in July.
Perfect, thank you.
And that training gets us some benefit, right? Eligibility for funds, right? Because we had that training?
That is a great Peggy question. I think she usually manages that.
This is just annual, I believe this is just annual workplace safety training for for village staff.
All right, I'm thinking of something different. I noted something in here for a police department ballistic shield. Can you talk about what that is?
Yes, so with some of the calls we're going on, we've been evaluating our ballistic shields. Unfortunately, we did not have a a shield that could take on rifle rounds. So we looked into it and we had the funding, so we purchased one.
Anybody else? Okay, so roll cover.
Fashion?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Manki?
Yes.
Thank you. Item six, consent agenda, staff recommendation, motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented, items six A through F. Uh, Tim? And currently questions, comments on these items? Carleen?
I just wanted to comment and thank Lori Anderson for her service on the DEI committee. She was one of the original members and really was a great asset to the committee. And we were very fortunate that another original member who had to step away for a while was able to step back in and really knew a lot of the things that we were doing. And so Rachel Wagabaza, who is on here somewhere as well, oh, she's in the same first sentence, is filling that vacancy and I'm really pleased about that. Appreciate both of their input and insights.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, thank you. Item seven, reports of committees, none. Item eight, unfinished business, items for discussion or possible action. A resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-six, reclassifying the parks manager's position to the parks and facilities manager position and hiring Eric who knows? Sorry, sorry, Eric, if you're if you're listening. To fill the open position, staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Amanda and Tim. And
Jeff's on a scheduled vacation, so I can handle any questions if there are any. Map this out in a memo in the packet. So as I said, if there's questions I can answer, I'd be happy to do so.
The only question, I did have one question, there's two memos, one from you recommending approval of the ordinance of the the resolution and then another one to hire. Does that need to be two separate actions or we can do that in a single one?
We can do it all in one. I included all the individual little improvements, improvements into one resolution. So by approving the resolution, you can take care of all those things.
Jason?
So, and this just impacts the two thousand and twenty-five budget by the pay increase of the fifteen thousand dollars?
Correct, yep.
Carleen?
I'm looking at the chart, the org chart on page ninety-six. And if I'm remembering correctly, this looks like to me that it changes the public's work, Public Works Department organizational structure a little bit, is that correct?
Only the title of the position. This was pretty much the same, is the same org chart that was approved as recently as, I think, maybe last year. When we added the parks manager position. And so really, we're just changing the name and reclassifying the position. So there's no structure changes here.
I think I'm remembering from the the budget thing, but maybe I'm wrong. I can't. I I'll look back at my my paperwork.
Okay, anybody else? We have a motion second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Eight B review draft, two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and thirty-four, capital improvement plan and related financial management plan update. I know it's in the packet, we've seen it several times. Martin, something to add? I know, I think next month we'll likely approve this.
Yep, nothing to add, same thing where we've been at for the last few meetings. As Dave mentioned, we'll have Brian from Ellers here to talk about the utility side of things at the next meeting. And if we don't have any changes, we should be prepared to approve the CIP at the next meeting and continue on to the budget next meeting in October.
Amanda?
Can we approve it based on the presentation earlier we saw? Like with our, doesn't, don't we hit beyond seventy-five percent of our debt capacity?
Not next year.
Or whatever? That's not next year, but I mean, like, can we approve it for now? And then realizing we would have to maybe shuffle some things if it becomes that's allowed?
Yes, yeah, it, yeah. You you're not over, actually over the seventy-five percent now and wouldn't expect to be for ten years under this projection. So you can approve it and you wouldn't be not in compliant with your policy because you're not there now. But understanding that you would continue to look at it to make sure that you don't go over it in the future.
Fair, thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Martin. Eight C, review bids for well number three, will rehab rehabilitation project, consider accepting the base bid and alternate bid and awarding the contract to J F Fendorf and Sons in the amount of one million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars, staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Get a motion. Jason and Tim. It's detailed in their packet, I think. Anything to add, Lauren, or?
Nope, I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion second. Lynn, please.
So Lauren, can you just tell me this story out loud that I'm reading? Basically, this is the way I understand it. The bid that came in, along with the other bids, had a bit of an anomaly. There will be a change order. So the number I'm looking at for the total bid, I need to add twenty-two to as far as like when I'm envisioning what the total cost of this looks like?
That's exactly right.
Okay, then you don't need to retell me the story, I got it.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, thank you, Lauren. Item eight, the task order number twenty, twenty-four dash oh, three with Rookert and Milky Incorporated for well number three, additional design services and construction observation for costs not to exceed one hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, staff recommendation, motion to approve. Jason and Amanda, questions, comments on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, thank you. Item nine, new business, items for discussion or possible action. A proposed village board public outreach program for fall two thousand and twenty-four presented by trustee McDaniel.
Thanks. So I'm coming back to you with another set of dates and events. This will get us through the end of the year. As you will maybe notice, we made a couple of changes for this season. Less public events that we are attending and a little bit more of us actually putting on said public event. For a variety of reasons, I want to kind of see if we can get a bit more involvement with the public. The board as a whole, you guys have been incredible at attending and being available for the summer events. But I do think that maybe getting more conversation with the public through some change events might help. And maybe that's what the fall or winter can be focused on. So we are attending a couple of typical events, sort of. This Saturday, we're actually doing two, just constant village outreach all day long on Saturday. We're going to go to the Monarch Festival. I've invited the Sustainability Committee as well to attend at the table. And then the outdoor movie night, which we're very excited about. Leanne helped and guided me on some recommendations. And so you'll see that the chamber meetings are on here for the fall. I'm asking for potentially one board member to attend those, just to be a face for the for the village board. And then you'll see two events called Coffee and Connect. Kickback Cafe was kind enough to allow us to steal a table on two Saturday mornings this fall, one in September, one in November, to simply invite the public to come and have a cup of coffee with us. We will not pay for the cup of coffee, you have to pay for the cup of coffee. But we will sit and drink coffee with you. And so hopefully, we can encourage some of the public to come and attend that. The other more notable one is on October twenty-seventh. I'm going to really push the limits for what I can ask of you all and do an event here at the Village Hall. I think one of the things that would be nice is to get the public to come to Village Hall and enjoy this space and see us in kind of a unique, unique way. And so I'm going to invite you to sign up for a trunk or treat. So you decorate the back of your car. I can provide said decoration for you if you are not interested. I did just for you if you are not interested. I did just see at Target this week that they actually have kits. All you have, it's like ten bucks to just buy the kit. So from three to five, we'll invite the public. Village Board members will have our vehicles set up as sort of stations, and then the public can come. It's a nice way for families to come. They don't have to cross the street. It's all in one combined space. I'm going to see if I can get some of the departments to loan me some Public Works vehicles, maybe a police car. We'll see. I'm sort of throwing these things out right now because that works well when you need to ask for favors, right? So we'll do some outreach on that prior talk to our twenty-seventh. But if you're interested, there'll be a sign up and you can let me know if you want me to do some decorations or if you want to. If you scroll down to the next page, I gave you some inspiration. There you go. It's not too difficult. Throw a pumpkin in the back of your trunk and call it a day. So we'd invite the public to come and enjoy that and the space, mostly our parking lot, if it's nice, which I hope it will be. And then the only other thing I wanted to make note of is November second, we are gonna maybe just volunteer for the candlelight hike, a table in the dark, not super helpful. So I felt like not taking the, the Village Outreach Board table would be good. So Andy's gonna contact us with some options for that. So you can sign up and then I'll be in contact if that's what you wanna do.
I'd like to go back to your trunk and treat event.
Yes.
I attended one of these last year. It was fully realized experience. I mean, they had DJs, they had, they had smoke, they had lights.
Oh, my goodness.
It was, it was, and the community involvement in that was pretty incredible. There's no one doing anything like this in Oregon now. Is that correct, that we know of?
No public entity that I am aware of. I believe that there are a couple of religious organizations that do this for their congregation and they invite the public. But this would be open to, to all and kind of just hosted by the village. Good question.
Anybody else? Questions?
I put a couple of them on my calendar.
Great, you'll get a sign up genius tonight.
That was the other question.
So first of all, thank you for putting this together, Lynn. Much appreciated. And then second question is, does the Kickback Cafe have double strong coffee? Because I'm not a morning person. I see a TV. I'm kidding.
You could sign up for like the nine-thirty to ten-thirty slot if you'd like to. Just sleep a little extra.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. And Lynn again for a report from the Childcare Summit held August, sorry?
We should have the board approve the, the plan.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve this plan. Tim and Tom. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Nine B, reports from the Childcare Summit held in August eighth and tenth, twenty-twenty-four, presented by Trustee McDaniel.
Okay, so this is the report that came out of the two sessions of childcare discussions that Leanne and Elise and I took part in in August. I will say in general, it was a really positive, interesting experience. I learned a lot. And one of the things I'm taking away from this is that the community of childcare providers that we have in this community are exceptional. They want to work together. They want to work with us. They want to provide really quality childcare for our village residents. And that is something that I think is so crucial to the health of our community. So I'm not gonna go through this. Basically, we did a SWOT analysis. We went through strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. You'll see, I have literally listed everything we wrote down. So I'm hoping to capture as much of the feedback as we received. We then bolded the areas in which Elise, Leanne, and I felt like the, the village had some ownership of and maybe not complete ownership. So take that with a grain of salt. As you scroll down, I wanted to find a way to sort of sum up what we're hearing in sort of a visual way. So you'll see this bubble chart that kind of identifies the top pieces of improvement. So parks, downtown spaces, obviously availability of care and financial barriers are big, but unfortunately, there are some constraints that we have as village government staff. I also listed a couple of resources. If people are interested in doing more outreach on a state level, we obviously know that this is a, a state issue as well. So there are two organizations I identified here. And then really, what you wanna look at is this goals sheet. So Elise, Leanne, and I sat down and kind of tried to sum up what we're gonna work on for the next little bit. So within a year, adding things like a directory to the website, finding ways that we can get general park maintenance or repair concerns out there, reviewing some crosswalk concerns. What I wanna bring your attention to is the last two, which I thought was really interesting. These are the two I, I learned the most about. Simply the words that we use could be really effective for our childcare providing community. Using the words childcare educator as opposed to babysitter or a daycare is not something that I would have thought about prior to this, but I think it's valuable and very helpful to understand that the words we use are powerful. And then just the idea of having committees look into what your specific committee can be, you know, working on to address issues with children and families. You'll see there are some DEI things identified. There's some sustainability things identified in the list above. And so some transportation things. So just something to keep an eye on if your committee is looking for some new goals and ideas. Within the next five years, you'll see there are some things. These are a lot dependent on some of the future decisions that we make. And then at the end, we just put some reflections for readers to understand sort of how we are walking away from this. I'm energized. We have a nice list of goals that I think we can accomplish. And I appreciated the input that the community gave us.
Thank you, Lynn. Questions or comments for Lynn? I attended the event and I thought it was extremely well put on. I thought Elise and Leanne were certainly instrumental in that. I thought there was good input and worthwhile endeavor. Tim?
I also attended and I, I was really impressed at the community members, both the parents and the childcare educators and sort of the positive approach they took to what we could do better without it becoming just a gripe session. So I thought it was really, really well done.
You don't need a motion to accept this?
No.
Thank you. Item ten, reports of village officers, department heads, consultants. This is information only. No action by the Village Board will be taken. Reports are in the packet. First is Village Administrator Report. Questions for Martin or comments? Item ten B, Police Chief Report, Calls for Service for June and July 2024.
Yeah, so I, I have for you in the packet, June's and July's. I'm trying to catch up here. But I do actually wanna walk through these a little slower than I normally do and just make a few highlights here. So for June, I'll start with, just talking about some of the work K-9 Archie has done. One of our officers stopped a vehicle in the nine-hundred block of Janesville Street. It had parked up on a curb and sat there. So our officer made contact. Since something was suspicious, K-9 Archie came over and ultimately crack cocaine and meth pipes were located in the, the vehicle. So that person was arrested for those, those issues. You may have seen it in the news. I know it's been a while, but in the city of Madison, they had a response to a possible mass shooting. When something like that happens, typically that law enforcement agency, much like us, if it were to happen here, is send anybody and everybody you can. And then this protocol kicks in that is followed. Our officers certainly went as well. We always make sure though, one remains here to take care of our village. So we did respond to that. We did assist Dane County Sheriff's Office in the town of Oregon with a person armed with a knife, threatening others and the residents. We, you know, we had the tasers. So we did, as we communicated with this person, we, we told them, we have tasers, you can drop the knife or we're gonna tase you. This is a time when we also got out our less lethal. If you remember, that's the mechanism that shoots a sponge bullet. It causes very, very minimal injury, but in these sort of situations, ends them safer than if using a firearm. So those were displayed, but as they were displayed and those commands were made, the person cooperated and dropped the knife. So we were happy to have that end the way it did. We responded to Ash Street for, at a residence for a stabbing. The two individuals involved, the victim and suspect, did not know each other, no relationship, and they both do not live in the village of Oregon. Ultimately, the victim did not wanna press charges. And it'd be inappropriate for me to comment further as to why we didn't make an arrest of the suspect for the stabbing outside of the victim not wanting to press charges, but there was much more there. Unfortunately, the victim did batter several of our officers while we were arresting her. So that's what she was taken to jail for. And, you know, we do traffic on Highway fourteen. You'll see in these reports, we have drivers going over a hundred and seven miles an hour in the seventy mile per hour zone. Sometimes we have questions of why we're enforcing so heavily up on fourteen. Just every single one of our residents use Highway fourteen to get into our community. And that kind of speed, that will end in a fatality. So we wanna make sure that speeds are followed. In this particular situation, the vehicle stopped for speeding due to the good work of the officer. We were able to get firearms off of a convicted felon and arrest them for warrants. So we got those guns off the road. Also in June, we assisted Fitchburg PD, our neighbor on the north. They asked for our assistance on Double M for a man with a knife, knife attacking the caller. We responded and helped apprehend the suspect. So as you can see, just in covering June here, you're gonna, I mean, I think you've heard it before from me. This is why we're starting to make sure we have that equipment now more than ever, the ballistic shield and things like that. Looking at the calls for service twenty-three to twenty-four in comparison in June, you're gonna see a huge difference with the nine-one-one calls. There's a backstory there. I can't remember the cell phone provider, but they were having some significant issues. One of the provider's towers kept going off and sending nine-one-one calls, no matter what. There are times we get clues that it is a issue on the provider's part, but we will still go out to that area. Or if we know that specific resident, we still will go out and make contact, make sure everything's okay. You've heard me say it before, but our domestic disputes almost doubled, nine to five, twenty-three to twenty-four. And that's where you're gonna start to see, those are your two officer calls, if not more than two officers. And those calls take longer. I mean, typically, minimum of two hours, depending on the complexity. It could be more than that, it could be six, it could be eight hours, just depending on whether hospitals involved or what. But those sort of calls where both officers are taken off the road to address that issue, it starts to impact our traffic. So that's why you'll see our, our traffic numbers start to dip down significantly. We've seen that month to month. Our officers are out there doing traffic and they hit it hard when they can. But unfortunately, these other calls pull them away. So you'll see the, I mean, almost cut in half for traffic citations. And then for traffic warnings, there's quite a decrease as well. We will continue to look for grants and other opportunities where we can get officers that are maybe off for the day back in to do some traffic enforcement. When we can, we do a seatbelt grant, OWI grant and speed grant that helps with that. That certainly will be a challenge as we continue to get back up to staffing. Just notable things in June for me, we did our lieutenant process, as you know. I work with the school district to help do large-scale safety planning for the graduation ceremony. We take events that have happened nationally and try to apply them to the planning that we have. And then I had the opportunity to attend the Middleton School District's Functional Large-Scale Emergency Exercise, which included Dane County Emergency Management, probably over twenty law enforcement agencies. And it was just great because you get to network, you get to work together through these things. And it could be very common if Middleton were to get a large-scale emergency, which they already have with Paradigm, but that I might get pulled or one of my sergeants might get pulled. It just depends on the situation. Noteworthy things for our department during the month of June is, so every seven years, the manufacturer for our handgun recommends that we replace it. These are very important tools. They have to work when we need it to work and they need to work accurately. So we did replace our handguns some time ago. And we went through the state qualification with those. And we also did our emergency vehicle operations by annual training that is state mandated. Moving on to July, notable things, Madison PD had requested our K-9 unit for a fatal hit and run the suspects had left on foot. K-9 Archie successfully located both suspects and they were apprehended thanks to his great work and his handler's work. We were called to the nine-hundred block of Janesville Street for a disturbance. An individual was intoxicated and throwing things off of the balcony, one of the apartments. Ultimately, that, that person was cited. Let's see, mutual aid request from Dane County for the town of Oregon for a medical call. We see this at least once every, every other year. And I know the fire chief did a press release to remind people not to handle fireworks, but it caused a significant hand injury to holding a lit firework. Just to give you a little bit of feedback on our drone operation, in 2023 is when we started that program. In the month of July, our drone operator was requested by the sheriff's office, I was actually on duty when this happened, to Sand Hill Road, which is just outside of the village for a, a person in mental health crisis who was armed with a sawed-off shotgun and was contemplating suicide. Our drone operator was able to keep him under observation from a altitude while negotiators talked with that individual. That incident went on for a long period of time, but knock on wood, thankfully ended peacefully. As far as the numbers go, again, domestic disputes, twenty-four, we see an increase, twenty-three, it was one domestic in a month, which is ideal. Zero would be ideal, right? But peaked up to five that month. Also with juvenile disturbances, we went from zero to eight. And, you know, our traffic numbers stayed relatively the same, but that is because our domestics were a little lower for the month. I talked to you about the firearms training. And then in July, we conducted two hiring processes. So just wanted to go through those a little bit more thoroughly this time. It was a busy two months for us, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Questions? Lynn, please.
So I wanna come back to Highway fourteen and East Another Wood Road. First of all, I'm looking at the timestamps on some of these and it's showing that your officers are pulling over these vehicles in the dark. And I just wanna applaud them for that bravery because to pull over a vehicle on the side of Highway fourteen, I would not wanna ever do. And so that they're doing that in the dark of night is admirable. Tell me why, I, I guess maybe I haven't seen this come up as a theme. Do, do you see this as often? Or did it seem particularly egregious in the last two months that we've seen high speed coming in this stretch of Highway fourteen?
In my opinion, it's hard to prove in data.
Yeah.
In my opinion, things get lax for a little bit and that normal, you know, it's typically the same drivers using that roadway. They get a little lax and they pick up that speed. And what happens is, is we know those curves that are south of one-thirty-eight there.
Mm-hmm.
There'll be a fatality there and you'll see an uptick in enforcement because the county's got the north and the south. Well, Fitchburg's got the north, county's got the south of that. And then we have the middle. When we are more present and we make it a point to slow down traffic, then we see speeds go back down. So it's always kind of one of those, we have to keep a little bit of pressure on to make sure people stay slow. But when they're at speeds like this, if they lose control and that, that, you know, stretch where it's windy, it will be a fatality.
Okay, thank you.
What else? Tim?
I had a question about the handgun replacement. What happens to the old guns?
So they get traded in. And then we use that money to pay, help pay towards the new guns.
The manufacturer has them.
Yes, yeah. The, the vendor we purchased the firearms, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Item eleven, announcements in miscellaneous business. A. Announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events and miscellaneous business. The Village Board members provide brief statements, but no discussion or action. Anyone? Anyone? Carly?
Yes, I just wanted to let the board and anybody else, uh, particularly staff and committee members know that after the presentation by Lena Lee Russe about the pilot community conversation, at our last meeting, we addressed some of the questions that the board had, and we think that we've pretty much got those covered. And on their next meeting, and I'll speak to Martin about this, uh, putting us on the agenda again to just kind of get final approval. But if you could mark your calendars for October twenty-ninth, I gotta talk to Jennifer about space, but we're, we hopefully will be doing a pilot community conversation with, uh, village board trustees, village staff, and any other committee members who would like to participate, just to run this through before we open it up to the community as a whole.
Tom?
This is probably a little late, but today is the Green Pastures Living fundraiser at Culvers. If you haven't eaten yet today, or if you've still got some time there till eight o'clock, your, um, purchase goes towards, uh, funding, help funding for our Green Pastures Living, which is an important element of developing senior living in our area. So if you're hungry, it's an opportunity.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Okay, eleven B, uh, future agenda items. Sounds like Carlene had one?
Yes.
Okay, we got that? Anybody else? No? Item twelve, we are done with this. Without objection, we are adjourned.